Good evening, I'd like to call the order of the San Rafael City Council meeting of Monday, October 21st, 2019. Ask you to join us, Fleguales.
We met in closed session prior to this point, and I'll ask the city attorney if there was any action.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There were three items addressed in closed session, and there is reportable action as to one of those items. And that concerns the pending matter in the Marin County Court called Rotary Manor versus City of San Rafael, case number CIV-1702340. The city council voted unanimously with one member absent at the time to approve this settlement agreement with Rotary. The case involved a sinkhole at the Rotary property down on Fifth Avenue that caused damage to a garden and parking area. And there was a bifurcated trial in which Judge Hawkinson considered the question of ownership and the city's liability for repair of the area. And after a contested trial, which the court found was a close question, the court did determine that the area was the responsibility of the city to repair and maintain. It's important to note that that determination was exclusive as to that property and does not have any precedential value with regard to any other area in San Rafael. That conclusion of Part 1 of the case left remaining the question regarding damages and attorney's fees, as well as repair of the area in question. And I'm glad to report that pursuant to ongoing negotiations that we've had, including a meeting with the plaintiffs and their attorney on site, we've now, with the council's approval, will be entering into this settlement agreement in which the city will be repairing the area in question and paying the total sum of $227,328. That's comprised of various elements, including plaintiff's attorney's fees, to which a plaintiff is entitled in an action, and which the court has made a determination of liability for inverse condemnation, and also some additional claims for loss of use. So I'm glad to answer any questions the council may have, but that's the conclusion of my report out of closed session.
Any questions? Seeing none, thanks for the work that you did on that. And in the other matters, no action was taken. We'll now turn to an open time for public expression. Anyone wish to address us this evening on items that are not on the agenda? We won't be able to take action, but certainly interested in your input, and it looks like you're ready to... If you would, state your name, please. This one's probably better.
My name is...
Yes, it is.
My name is Karsten Anderson. I'll repeat that. My name is Karsten Anderson. I live at Chapel Cove, San Rafael. I'm also a member of the Board of Directors of COST Coalition for Sensible Taxpayers. And I'd like to address what you're going to be talking about tonight, and just give you a very brief summary of kind of our position on this, which we...
Let me offer just a piece of advice, and take it or speak now if you wish, but when we address the issue, it might be more appropriate, because then we can address your comments with others if we wish. You can do it now, but waiting for the agenda item might be a better idea.
Okay. Since I'm here, let me just do it now.
Go ahead.
I'll be brief.
It's your call.
So, one of the biggest issues that we have, where the whole concept that we do believe in overall, is that since it's a new effort, so to speak, countywide, we think it's very important that it has a sunset clause, and I think you're probably aware of that, and we think eight to 10 years, maybe 10 years should be the max. And also, like any other big projects, we think that there should be a project list, and that should be a well-designed Citizens Oversight Committee, a COC. So we do support the overall plan, but the taxpayers should have a chance to reevaluate it after eight to 10 years, and we'll continue to work with all the groups involved, the stakeholders and the cities, and hopefully we'll have a good outcome jointly. So, thank you for your time.
And thanks for your comments, and I'll just add that, in fact, it is now prescribed for 10 years, in part from the input from your group, so we thank you for that. And then, two, there is also an oversight committee, so I think both of those have been satisfying.
So we're two out of three?
What's the third? Oh, the project... You have to decide for yourself. There'll be a description of the program.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Michael Parsons. I live on Lincoln Avenue. First of all, I'd like to say the women and men of San Rafael Police Department are outstanding. But it's my belief city management has left them and the citizens of San Rafael down. Patrol units appear to be reactive or reactionary to situations rather than having the ability to proactively patrol suppressing situations that warrant their attention. All I need to do is look at my neighborhood. There's nothing to see somebody going down Lincoln Avenue at 40 miles an hour, or passing a school bus with a stop sign with his red lights out and flashing. What happened to the bike patrol on the bike path? It helped prevent people from smoking crack, shooting, upper dealing drugs. Watch out for the needles in the bushes. These are only a few of the multiple issues not being addressed. Bottom line is, it is my belief that patrol units are extremely short-staffed, and the citizens of the city knew how few patrol personnel there were, they would be up in arms. Also, it appears to be an issue keeping personnel. Years ago, you became familiar with the faces of SRPD. Now they appear to change far rapidly. Why is there an issue that prevents an officer from staying with the department? And this comes about after chasing a man down at 12 o'clock at night, preventing him from probably beating up his ex-girlfriend, because it took 15 minutes for a police officer to show up, because everybody was busy. And also, the crime that's in the neighborhood is insane, and I see no proactive policing. It's all just reacting to every situation. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Why don't you give me a call tomorrow? We'll talk further about it, like they said something, because I have a slightly different impression. No surprise to you, I'm sure, but let's discuss it tomorrow. I don't want to take the time now, or I can't take the time now. Anyone else? Yes?
Good evening. Lisa Levine, Bay Point Lagoon Homeowners Association. But I'm speaking specifically on behalf of a subgroup within the association that we've named the Bay Point Village Drive Homeowners Group. And I'm here to talk specifically about the city lot directly across the street from our homes, which is now a permanent construction site. I have several photos that I'm going to give the clerk at the end of my two-minute speech to kind of illustrate what I'm talking about. Permanent construction site filled with multiple commercial vehicles, forklips, city dump trucks, San Rafael Sanitary District, portable tanks, dump trucks, storage containers the size of, like, shipping containers. Dust, noise, six days a week, starting at 8:00 in the morning. We are all forced to keep our windows closed when we go outside in an attempt to enjoy our backyard, the noise. So we go inside, but we can't open our windows because of the dust and the blight going on there. As far as other damages, several of the homeowners on our street have recently applied for property tax reductions. Several remaining homeowners are in the process of doing that. Two realtors on the street representing homes that have just recently gone into contract have told us that, or told me specifically, that homes will close far below market value, specifically because of this construction site across the street. So there are economic damages as far as diminution of value of our properties. Living with the constant noise and dust and hazards to our health, as well as mental health, are still ongoing as far as what we're dealing with. And just to wrap up, we would like some sort of serious attention addressed to this as we kind of power through what our options are. It seems wrong, and it seems unfair, and we'd like the city to address it.
As I mentioned at the outset, one of the awkwardnesses of this particular open session is certainly we're interested, but we can't respond. It seems a little weird, but I would nevertheless suggest you talk with the city manager about some of your issues, and see if we can get things in a better place. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Which case will close, come back, ask for the city manager's report?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to be very brief on the city manager's report, and probably take a little extra time on the wildfire prevention authority later. But to be brief, just a couple announcements. We have a couple things coming up, not this weekend, but the weekend after, that I want to make sure the community knew about, and that is the Dia de los Muertos, or Day of the Dead celebration, is on November 2nd. And that's at the Alborro Community Center, and it starts at 3:00 PM, and the community procession starts at 6:00. And then there are cultural performances after that at the community center until 9:30. So it's a great event. I encourage everyone from the community that hasn't gone in the past to check it out. And then the very next day, just to plan your entire weekend that weekend, November 3rd is the West End Village Celebration. It's their family fun day. And they have food, live music, there's lots of kids' events, and it's a great activity in the West End, and really kind of showcases that part of Fourth Street. There's a stage with music that bands... Music starts at 11:00 AM and goes until 7:00 PM, so that's kind of a full day stop-in anytime at the West End Village, and I just wanted to provide those two announcements. Thank you.
Thank you very much, except you were gone, I think, over the weekend. Perhaps you could explain yourself?
The city was very honored and fortunate to receive a large statewide award for an internal administration program that we have called Together San Rafael. And I was... It's really nice to talk about. The award finally was presented to us last week, so we're now able to finally talk about it. But the Leave California Cities would like to come to the council meeting and present it to us formally. So the reason why I didn't mention it is because I was hoping that if there is going to be some media coverage, that it happens when we have the formal presentation. But it was a great honor, and the League recognizes only one jurisdiction in the state for this particular award, which is internal administration, and it's for the sorts of things that we're doing as we're trying to modernize our city services. And we're trying to look at everything we do when it comes to service design and putting the community at the center of that service design. So I could... We'll go into it in more detail when we have a more formal presentation from the League of California Cities, but I appreciate you mentioning it, and it was an honor to receive it on behalf of the city council.
And did we receive anything else? I'm just curious.
We did, in fact.
Pulling teeth.
The other thing that the League honored San Rafael City Council and the city with were a number of Beacon Awards, which is their name for sustainability awards that they have. And San Rafael won a series of Beacon Awards. You get Beacon Awards for things like greenhouse gas reductions for your particular agency, like the City of San Rafael, and then you also get them for greenhouse gas reductions in the community and the planning process that we go through, and there's a number of different things that qualify you for these awards. So we received several of them, including an overall, when they look at the various awards, they have kind of an overall category as well, and we received a gold medal award in that category.
Just another gold award.
So we're one of the actually few cities in the state of California that have done that gold level achievement at the Beacon Awards. So kudos to... We've got an amazing sustainability committee, and Councilmember Colin is the liaison to that group, and I know some of them are in the audience today, so that was a very big deal as well. Thank you for asking about it.
Congratulations to everybody involved. Thanks for bringing us up today. The special presentation, which we're looking forward to, recognizing the San Rafael Pacifics is going to be postponed. They're involved in something else, and so we'll do it at a later date. Not sure when, but soon, I hope. And therefore, we'll turn to the consent calendar, items 5A through 5D. Anyone wish to have an item held? Comments from council? Comments from those in attendance? Seeing none, we'll bring it back for a motion regarding these five items.
I move that we approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Move it in second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Colin.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McCullough.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
I am at Arcrey's 5-0, and now on to other agenda items. That is a Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority, the main event for the evening.
And thank you, Mayor. I'm going to kick us off on this and then turn it over to Chief Gray, and I will thank you in advance for giving us a little extra time on the staff report. We've all worked on this for so long that we have all these things that we want to share with you and the community about why we are strongly recommending this today. Chris Gray is going to provide the details of the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority, and the Sonoma and Napa County fires, and then those around the Paradise area, were not the sole impetus for this new authority, but they were the most recent reminders of the impact of wildfires. And there are actually 19 fire districts in Marin County, and those agencies have been talking for a number of years about what we can be doing to improve our wildfire prevention and preparedness. The chief is going to be talking about some of those things, and some of the planning efforts that have gone on over the past few years, including the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. There is a Lessons Learned document that was created after the Sonoma-Napa fires, the grand jury reports that had come out on this topic. And then right here in San Rafael, as the council well knows, who've been working for a couple of years, starting with the council reaching... Giving staff very clear direction on being bold and doing what we can in order to improve the safety when it comes to wildfire prevention, and then culminating in a 38-point plan that Mayor and Councilmember Bushy have been the committee for. So this isn't something that's brand new. This has been something that's been going on for a number of years. What is... The new part of it is that at the current time, much of the wildfire prevention that's going on throughout the county is being done jurisdiction by jurisdiction. And it just can't be as significant when it's done that way than when we're all working together on it. So, for example, if we have the best plan in the country, and there's no plan in San Anselmo, we're going to be negatively impacted. We're at risk by that. So we're all kind of relying on our neighbors to be equally prepared and ready for something and be able to respond and prevent it from happening in the first place. Personally, I was on the committee to form... That worked on forming the JPA agreement, and that was a subcommittee of Marin Managers. There's a group called Marin Managers Association, which is really just all the city and town managers in Marin, and the Fire Chiefs Association, so that's my one self-explanatory, all the fire chiefs in Marin, and the county. And we put together a subgroup of people that were responsible for putting together these drafts of the Joint Powers Authority. And Chris, Chief Gray, and I have been working on that group from the beginning. We tried to reflect what worked and what didn't work on other JPAs that we saw, and tried to put together a good model for government operations and technical committees. I also happen to be the chair of the Marin Managers Association during the same period, so... And that's a rotating position between from manager to manager. So it was my responsibility also to try to convene the various jurisdictions and try to reach common ground on this topic. So both Chief Gray and I have played a particular leadership role on this topic of wildfire prevention. And I have to tell you that, from my perspective, that finding common ground was no easy task. There's lots of different perspectives, and it wasn't just the 19 agency opinions, but also the community, and current and former grand jury members, a number of different community groups, sometimes with conflicting aspirations. And all of that, we tried to put together and come up with a document and a JPA that met as many of the needs as we could, that fell under these four principles. And I think the chief has a slide on this, but I just wanted to mention them, because I felt that they were really important, because they were the... What we went back to each time when a new idea came up. And that was, is it good public policy? Is it responsive to the stakeholders? Can it get the support of the 19 agencies and the public? And then also, does it help achieve the mission of the JPA or the Joint Powers Authority? So what we have before you today is the culmination of that effort, what we feel can... Is the best product that can... Is good public policy and is responsive and can get that support. I've been asked a couple times of, well, if it's so great, how come other counties aren't doing it? And I think that we will see more of these kind of JPAs in other counties. I think that it's a little unusual that we were able to put something together. After a few, couple of years of putting together, these plans really helped a lot, what I mentioned, the CWPP and also the Lessons Learned document. I think that helped everyone get on the same page. I know, just having attended, Mayor, you brought up the League of California Cities Conference. I had several people come up to me from Sonoma County and other counties saying, "Tell me about what you're doing. I heard about it, and we'd like to be able to do the same thing in our area." So that was great. The actual agreement that you have before you tonight is a little different from what we normally have when we have a resolution or ordinance and we're asking for your feedback or changes to it. This one has to go through these 19 different agencies, so... And we're a little bit late in the game. I think we're in the last four of the 19 that are going this week. So there has been a few changes that I've made, and Chief Gray's going to go through what those are. But what we're looking at is kind of a consensus document. We're trying to meet the needs of all of these different jurisdictions and different community groups. So we're basically... You're basically being asked tonight, do you want to join this JPA or not? And you're not being asked what sorts of things might you tweak within the JPA agreement to decide to join. Otherwise, we have to go back to start again and go to each of these different agencies. And this... The little micro-speech that I just gave was repeated at each of these agencies, as it's gone from place to place, starting with the county administrator talking to the Board of Supervisors, saying that this is something that, once it gets approved, we have to go back to the beginning if we're going to change anything. Chief Gray and I attended the Board of Supervisors meeting when the JPA was initially created, and it was a red flag day. And we've had more red flag days since that day, and we've also had power shutdowns in Marin since that time. So we really feel like the time to act is now. I got an email as I was going through my inbox from PG&E today, saying that we are just about to have another power shutdown, and then another one that said, disregard that message, that was sent in error. And it just points to the uncertain times that we're in right now, and the risk that we're in as it relates to wildfire and the uncertainty that's out there. So to be able to bring all of these different agencies together, to work together on this, I think is extremely timely. I just wanted to answer a couple of the frequently asked questions that I've heard a lot. The first one is, why can't we do it with existing resources? And I wanted to make sure... I know the council already understands this, but I want to make sure the community understands that as a fire prevention... Or as a fire agency, we are largely set up to do suppression, that we're largely set up to, when someone calls 911, we're there, and we're responding, and we're there to help, no matter what. We do a fantastic job at that. And whether it's a medical call, or it's a fire, in three to five minutes, often less, we are there and we're helping. And that's what we're set up to do, and that's what we're great at, and that's what we're so proud of. We're not set up, really, to do the prevention or the wildfire prevention side, and we do that in a way that, you know, in a better financial year, where there's more funds to put towards it, we might allocate more funds toward that, or if we get a grant on a particular year, we'll do that. But it's just something that we feel is too important to be running in that manner, especially today, and especially after the wildfires that we've had. So it can't be something that just as resources become available on any given year, or we got lucky and we got an AmeriCorps team, that can't be our strategy. So we feel that this approach is a much more effective way to make it more of a regular service that we provide through our fire agency, rather than something that we do when we can. And then the question of the 10 years, which I think was on most people's minds of the, you know... And I have to tell you that when we originally drafted the JPA agreement, it did not have... It wasn't for 10 years. It was until repealed by voters. And the logic behind that was because, when we looked at it, we thought of this issue as one that isn't going to go away. We live in a... We're lucky to live in a place that has lots of open space and vegetation, and it grows back, and you do fuel reduction, and there's a period of time, maybe you get to a maintenance mode after a while, but it's ongoing. We're going to have... We need to be doing wildfire prevention for every single year in the future of the city. So that was one of the reasons, is because the need isn't going to change. And then there were some changes made subsequently that, when this issue kept coming back up of, well, what about 10 years? What about 10 years? There were a few other things that were done, which was making it, instead of a 10 cents per square foot tax, it was up to 10 cents, so that the board of the JPA could determine down the road that, well, maybe we did reach after some number of years, and now we're in a maintenance mode, and we can reduce this amount. That could be done at that time. That was the logic behind that. There was also language added that said, every five years, the JPA board will consider, are we spending the money on the right things, and should we be doing it differently? There's provisions in the agreement that they could do that at any time, but that they have to do it every five years and say, is this the allocations that we want to spend the funds on? And then also, there was a provision that was added that said the Board of Supervisors should evaluate the tax every 10 years. And the logic at that point was that it would create a board meeting of five people that... To determine whether or not it should continue, or whether it should not continue at that point. Subsequent to that, we moved entirely to just, it's a tax that's for 10 years. And I want to make that perfectly clear. Those other things are still in the document, and I think it's important that they're still in the document, because those are all good things to still have and be thinking about. We should still be thinking about whether it needs to be 10 cents, so the up to 10 cents should still be in there. The five-year evaluation should still be in there. The Board of Supervisors saying after 10 years, this is something that we would want to put back on a ballot again, should still be in there. But in the way it was written before was that it was going to continue unless the board took some sort of action, and now the way it's written is that it will stop. It is a 10-year tax. And the only way that it would continue is if the board decides to put it on the ballot and the community, the residents of Marin decide to renew it. So that's been a change that has been kind of as... Over the past month or so, that's been happening, but I just wanted to make that perfectly clear. The other thing I wanted to add is that there's some talk of the polling that was done early on, on that 10 years, and the... We polled nine years and 18 years, and it didn't do quite as well as the language that said until repealed by voters. So it's a little bit of a heavier lift, in my mind, to do the 10 years. It's what we're recommending as staff. We're recommending that we do the 10 years. We think that's the right way to go, and we think that that's, in keeping with those principles that I mentioned, of being able to get as many of those 19 agencies in the community together to support it, I think that the 10 years is absolutely necessary. But it will be a little bit of a heavier lift, and we'll have to make sure that we're... All of those community groups that have been involved that wanted to see it at 10 years, we'll have to make sure that they're getting the word out and making sure that people understand and are informed when it comes to what this tax is. So I feel like it's a historic opportunity to make a difference in wildfire prevention, and staff is completely unified, and our strong recommendation that it will move the needle on wildfire prevention and fire safety. Just a couple really quick thank-yous, because we spent a lot of time on this, and I'm not predetermining an outcome, which I don't know what it'd be, so no matter what the outcome, I still want to thank these people, which is Chief Gray, Christina Lilovich, and Quinn Gardner, who's been working on this topic, both at the level of the JPA, and also with our Community Wildfire Committee, with Mayor Phillips and Councilmember Bushy. And then also, County Fire Chief Jason Weber, and Bill Tyler, who's the chair of the Fire Chiefs Association, County Administrator Matthew Heimel in the county, fellow city managers that put this together, and the grand jury members. And then lastly, and most importantly, our own mayor and council, because you're the ones that have been... That told us, however long it was, Chief Gray probably remembers exactly what meeting it was, but when you said, "Be bold and go put together a plan," that was from... That was the direction of this council, saying, "Go do that." And that was the subcommittee of Councilmember Bushy and Mayor Phillips saying, and we're willing... willing to commit our time to work with the community and, and make this happen. So, and also the mayor taking a leadership role in keeping the urgency on this issue and, and making it continue to be a high priority throughout our whole region, I think helped a lot. That, that helped as we were going and putting together the document and as they were working with all the various agencies, to know that this council was supportive of the concept of wildfire prevention and that we felt that it was that urgent, that it needed to happen now and know it couldn't wait until, maybe we can try it in November or the year after or something like that. It was urgent and needed to happen now. So I want to thank the council for that and then turn it over to Chief Gray for his comments.
Thanks Jim, Chief.
Thank, thank you, Jim, and really appreciate your assistance and leadership in this. Members of the City Council, Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, this is a historic evening at least for San Rafael and hopefully the continued momentum for all of Marin County. Climate change is hard. I'm often thinking about, anytime I'm addressing council, the community, the public afterward, you know, what should I, would I have or could I have said that would have made even more persuasive difference? I'm emphatic with you this evening about my support after this and joining the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority and adopting the proposed resolution, asking the Marin County Board of Supervisors to place the parcel tax with a ten-year limit on the ballot in March for our voters to decide if they want to increase our preparation for the growing wildfire threat in Marin. We're joined tonight by Nevada Fire Chief and Marin County Fire Chiefs Association President, Bill Tyler. We appreciate his and all of the efforts across the county, those who are working together on this worthy mission. This authority will significantly enhance our ability to become more wildfire resilient, sustainable and resistant to wildfire. And I think that's a critical term. I can arguably say Marin is not at this point. We've got a long way to go. We've had over a century of growth of vegetation and then we started putting out fires. We didn't allow nature to take its course. It's had a significant effect on the carbon buildup with the vegetation. That's all among this. Really the authority and, and Chief Tyler's going to cover a couple of things after I show a, a video with a PowerPoint. Three major objectives. Get people out alive in Marin, protect their home from being destroyed by fire and create a resistant landscape that reduces fire intensity. And then that involves the open space as well. As previously stated, I think the, the resources and synergy available through the authority are well beyond anything we could muster on our own. And I wanted to cover a couple of points. All of our surrounding neighbors currently have joined the JPA, including those. We provide fire protection and emergency medical services through our partnerships with Marin County and Marinwood. So everyone within our sphere, and back to Jim's comment, if we only did this on our own and our neighbors did nothing, we're at risk. This is the, the benefit of everyone doing this in a unified approach. Of the five zones that have been described throughout Marin County, I believe that the greater San Rafael area has the densest population and largest population, the highest emergency call volume and assessed valuation. My belief is that we are the greatest at risk and we have the most to gain by joining. We've collaborated and reached a consensus with both COST and CWP on issues important to all. We have support from most climate groups in Marin and our commitment to work with them. I know Bill Carney and Bill Cole are both here, Organization for Action Marin and Sustainable San Rafael. I was able to brief Councilmember Collin and the, our Sustainability Group, our Climate Change Action Plan Work Group this past week. And it's important, I think, note that fires don't just burn up trees and shrubs and emit smoke. They leave behind long-lasting changes on the ground and those changes also affect the climate. Extreme fires can release huge amounts of CO2 in a very short period of time. Experts estimate that the blazes that devastated us in October 2017, two short years ago, how we soon, may soon forget, but those that were involved will live on with that forever. It emitted as much CO2 in one week as all of California's cars and trucks do over the course of a year. One event. And I will, and I'll tell you that they say a week, that fire didn't burn for a week. It burned for a matter of hours, a matter of hours. In addition, as always, I think we must be good stewards of public funds and efficiently and effectively operate and manage the new prevention authority without creating new full-time benefited positions. I advocate that we leverage existing agencies and resources as we have done with the reduction of fire chiefs. It's an endangered species, which is a good thing, in the county so far. We can utilize existing resources through shared services with existing talent, rather than creating a bunch of new positions. The wildfire prevention plan will also work to interrelate with our own thirty-eight-point wildfire prevention and protection plan in San Rafael. It will augment and enhance to a far greater degree than we can do it alone here in San Rafael and Marin. And I think it's going to work seamlessly together. So this is a significant undertaking. It has far-reaching objectives and I think wide-ranging benefits. I'm confident that the creation of the authority will dramatically increase both community and firefighter safety in San Rafael and Marin County. And clearly an example of doing something like this by together, we're better. It's also, I think, important to note that this is a framework that I think can be utilized and expanded upon and I think will give us a great benefit in years to come. So with that, Mayor and Council, I'd like to show a brief video and ask Chief Tyler
Wildfires are bigger, burn longer, cause more damage and kill more people than ever before. During the fire siege of 2017, when our friends to the north experienced that disaster, Marin was just one ignition source away from that occurring. We have the same fuel conditions, same weather and same topography that drove that fire that night.
Wildfire risk is now a constant threat in California, especially in communities like Marin with lush vegetation and development near significant areas of natural open space. Marin's natural beauty and abundant undeveloped lands are considered source fuel for a potentially devastating and fatal wildfire, similar to the ones that have ravaged Sonoma, Napa, Lake Counties and Paradise over the past few years. Many Marin neighborhoods are adjacent to wildlands because of a strong desire to live close to nature. Recent fire seasons have been longer, hotter and among the deadliest and most destructive on record. The 260,000 residents of Marin receive fire protection and emergency response services from nineteen separate cities, towns, fire districts and the county. But there is no single agency responsible for coordinating wildfire prevention.
The threat of large destructive wildfires in Marin is real. And one of the most important lessons is that a fast-moving wildfire doesn't care about jurisdictional boundaries. But a coordinated, large-scale effort to improve prevention and safety can make a difference, can save lives and property.
In response to the need for coordinated action to reduce wildfire risk in Marin, local fire agencies and municipal governments have proposed creation of a new Joint Powers Authority, the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority. The new authority's mission would be to improve and oversee programs in early wildfire detection, improved alert and warning systems, resident evacuations, vegetation management and fire hazard reduction, defensible space property evaluations, educating the public about wildfire safety and more.
This new fire prevention and mitigation program is designed to be in addition to, not in replacement, of the current fire prevention efforts currently in place in our Marin communities. The program is designed to bring all of Marin neighborhoods up to a defensible space standard to minimize loss from large damaging wildfires while also allowing flexibility to address local needs. For example, some communities have local fire issues related to the need for improved fire patrols, road widening, increasing the vegetation removal along critical evacuation routes.
Some local community issues that can be addressed, for one, is improving your primary and secondary evacuation routes from your neighborhood. Many communities within Marin only have one way in and one way out. How we improve that is by removing hazardous vegetation that's located along the roadside. A second issue to address would be improved defensible space inspection program. How that is involved is by allowing a cadre of inspectors to come into our community and to be able to consistently inspect every single property and give recommendations on how you can prepare your home to become more fire safe.
Currently, no dedicated source of funding exists for wildfire prevention and preparedness in Marin. Options for securing a dedicated funding source are being evaluated, including placing a local funding measure on the ballot in 2020 for voters to consider. It is estimated that approximately $20 million per year is needed to implement an effective coordinated wildfire prevention program.
We've been lucky to avoid a major wildfire in Marin County, but luck is not a strategy. We need a good plan to make ourselves safer. Research and just plain common sense point out the need to have a coordinated countywide wildfire prevention effort. It's been a long time coming, but I'm very excited to see all this come together.
In the coming months, cities, towns and local fire agencies will have the opportunity to join the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority and decisions will be made about securing dedicated funding for the authority's programs. To stay informed, please visit www.marinwildfire.org.
Chief Taylor, welcome. Good evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and Council. Just getting this set up here. All right. Thank you. All right. So as you've heard a lot of details tonight and of course, your city manager and your fire chief, all the great work that they've done, know exactly what it is that, that you need to, to hear that helped inform you. You know, it's really taken over a hundred years for us to get to this place, the overgrown and unhealthy state of our landscape here. It's interesting to note that over fifty percent of all of the lands in Marin County are actually privately owned. We've also got, the vast majority of all the homes that are built are combustible construction. And so when you put those things together, you've got a real recipe for disaster. As was mentioned, there was really three goals of this JPA. One was to get people out alive. We want to protect and improve the survivability of homes and we wanted to create resilient landscapes that could support lower intensity versus higher intensity wildfires. With regards to the JPA, with regards to the JPA, it is a countywide coalition of both local fire agencies, cities and towns and the county of Marin, and it's working together under a single joint powers agreement that will be comprehensive with regards to wildfire With regards to information update and feedback, I would like to share that, you know, the, the chiefs, over the last year, along with the city managers, have worked hard to develop the JPA. We've included and solicited feedback from over forty different public meetings and councils, boards and various stakeholders. It was an exercise in collaboration, in cooperation and compromise. And it's important to note that not every one stakeholder got exactly what they wanted. Through this process, we created public information. There were websites, the video that you just saw, background documents and frequently asked questions that were constantly updated throughout and made available to the public. You may have recently seen a Marin IJ Voice ad that talked about concerns that they would raise over whether nonprofits like churches would be exempt from this. And so we're here to clarify, clarify the fact that they are. There's exemptions for churches and other, other properties that are classified under Use Code 60 and 61. I know that's sort of technical, but that's the county assessor's code for those types of occupancies. In addition, the member agencies need Fire and Taxing Authority voting weight. So in order to move on the budget or any of the programs forward, there's got to be more than fifty percent of the participating members and it also has to meet more than fifty percent of the population. So there's sort of a check and balance there. We gave, like I mentioned, over forty informational sessions. The changes were reviewed by the working group and we got very positive response from the public councils and boards. Again, using the guidelines that the city manager had talked about, is it good public policy? Is it responsible to the stakeholders? Can we get the support of the nineteen agencies and the public? And does it help achieve the mission of the JPA? That was our overriding principles as we looked at each one of these changes. Another change that occurred was expanding the governing board and operations committee to have one member represented from each of the nineteen agencies. We also provided for programmatic reviews every five years and the ability to adjust those programs and proportions, which is important as we move along. We've added a strong citizens oversight group. We've also included the up to ten cents parcel language that allows us to be able to move either down the amount if it's needed and we see that the work is being done and we get into some sort of a maintenance mode. We don't anticipate that happening right off the bat though, as there's much work to be done. And then also, most importantly, adding the ten-year sunset clause to the ballot measure. We saw substantial support come in from taxpayer groups like COST as a result of that. There's also an eighty percent return to source over five years operationally that was built in to make sure that there was equity across all five of the different areas. And it also allows for local code control to remain with the local agency, which was important. Again, the funding breakdown, it's about sixty percent of the funding goes to wildfire detection and evacuation system and improvements, vegetation management and hazard reduction, as well as grants, public education and neighborhood wildfire preparedness. That is the core of the JPA. That is, that is where you had the, the shared programs. Then twenty percent is for defensible space and home hardening evaluations in which an agency can choose to, to do that part of the program with that funding, which also has grants for seniors and people with access and functional needs. The last twenty percent gives a local specific wildfire prevention programs, like here in San Rafael, being able to help deal with some of the homeless encampments and the ignitions that are being caused specifically was a San Rafael concern. This is basically what the structure looks like. You've got nineteen directors, those are elected officials, one from each of the nineteen, up to nineteen participating agencies, with a direct line of citizen oversight from those stakeholders. You've also got an operations and budget, which is most likely going to be fire chiefs and city managers, again, one from each of the represented members. And then a technical advisory committee that will have well over nineteen members. This is where you not only have technical experts from the participating members, but also stakeholders, large property owners, PG&Es and others where we can make sure that the work that they're doing is amplified by the work that we're doing in cooperation. This is a map again that shows those five zones and nineteen members from each. You've got Nevada to the north, which is sort of that green looking one, San Rafael directly below that, the central Marin, southern Marin and then the county areas. If you drop the funding into the different programs, this is approximately how that would look, about 12.5 million dollars going towards those, those core responsibilities, 4.2 million for the defensible space and home hardening and then 4.2 million for the agency-specific mitigation programs. The structure of the parcel taxel is up to ten cents per square foot for both improved residential and commercial. With regards to multi-unit apartment complexes, three or more units, it's $75 per unit. Unapproved parcels are a part of the problem. They need to be a part of the solution. So quarter acre is $25 per parcel, quarter acre to half acre is $100 per parcel and half an acre and greater is $150 per parcel. There's also low, senior low-income exemptions that are built in and an annual inflation adjustment that's capped at three percent. Other mandatory physical accountabilities include that citizens oversight committee. There is the independent oversight of the annual reporting of the financials and also annual audits that are required and of course, a prioritized annual work plan and budget. This is a copy of the proposed ballot language. It's also in your packets. It's also in your packets. Highlighted there shows the up to 10 years that was the concern for some of the tax citizens group, and so it's now included in the ballot measure. Our timeline here, we're into October. We're just meeting now with the last of the cities, towns, and fire districts to come onboard. That period will end on October 31st. The member agencies need to pass a resolution requesting the Board of Supervisors to place the parcel tax initiative on the March 2020 ballot, and then in November, the Board of Supervisors would consider all of those requests and then place the ballot measure on 11/19 for the March 3rd, 2020 election. What I would just like to say in closing is that what your board, your council's being asked for tonight is to join the JPA and to ask the supervisors to place this tax measure on the ballot. We think that the democratic process is very, very important. All of the public dialogue and the comment that you'll hear again tonight, we're asking you to put it in front of the voters. There's going to be lots of choices that they're going to have as the years go by, and we want the voters to be able to decide what is most important to them when they're spending their tax dollars. And we think that this will allow them to have an informed decision to be made. So again, thank you very much. I'm available to answer questions, and that's the end of the presentation.
And thank you very much. We'll have questions of staff, and so if you would maybe just stay there. I suspect there will be overlapping to some degree, and once again, thanks for not only being here this evening and making the presentation, but all the work, because I know you were directly involved in a great deal of this, if not all of it. So thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
Start with questions of the presentation by council members, and then open to public and then come back. Questions, we're going to start. Go ahead, Kate.
Thank you. I echo the mayor's comments that you can tell there's an enormous amount of work that's gone into this. As I understand it, and actually, the city manager said that we're one of the last, there are only like four agencies that are still having the presentation. As I understand it, it's been approved overwhelmingly by everyone who's received the presentation, but Belvedere and the Southern Marin Fire District have not approved it. So what happens if everybody's in but two agencies? How's that dealt with?
So they will not be participating. They've indicated to us anyway that they will not be participating. Tiburon Fire Protection District was a 3-2 vote of their council, I think, Belvedere 4-1, and Belvedere's under the jurisdiction and protection of the Tiburon Fire Protection District. You know, we're hoping that they would still join. There's a little bit of time, but I think that, you know, our efforts to try and get them to participate have passed. They will have an opportunity, I believe, in 10 years when this comes back before the voters, if it's successful and passing, as I think it will. You know, I think, once that time goes by, people will see the effectiveness of all of the work that's being done, and I think they'll want to get onboard. I wish that they had at least given the opportunity to their voters to make that decision, rather than to make that decision for them, and only time will remain to be seen how their public reacts to that.
Yeah, well, no, it's, I mean, not to pontificate on further, but if everyone else is doing it, they're going to receive a great halo benefit, but they won't be helping to fund it. I mean, the education that's going to be going on, it's not like that education's going to stop at the borders, but anyway, thank you.
Yep, good point. John, do you have a comment?
Yeah. This is, obviously, it's important. We've seen it, we've experienced it personally. You know, my brother lost his house in paradise, so I have personal knowledge of this. And so we realize that it's all very important, of this effort that everybody's taken and the time that everybody's put in, Chief and Jim especially, and the rest of the fire subcommittee. Question, you'd mentioned that we're being asked to vote to approve this, to join the JPA, and that really, there's nothing that's in there if we disagree with anything in this staff report, or JPA agreement, or ballot language. This isn't the place to do that, because we're not going to be able to change anything. And so is that, first of all, is that correct?
Yeah, I'd say that the JPA agreement itself is set. So you're making a decision of whether you want to join the JPA under those rules or not. That's not, I mean, I would like to add on to that, that once the JPA is formed, they have authority over changing their own provisions. So we see JPAs all the time make changes to themselves, you know, if they want to look at the allocations of funds or something like that. So there's things like that that can happen, but in terms of tonight's action, right, we're not editing, you're not being asked to edit the JPA agreement, you're just being asked, given what's there, are you, do you want to be in or out of this authority?
Okay. Well, with that, then I'll just save comments, since my questions will mean nothing to this extent, so.
Okay, Mayor.
I have a question. Deep down into the details of it, though, can you explain to me why the multifamily residential amount is $75 for three or more units? That seems to me to be low. Is there some reason you went with a specific amount, a per-unit amount for multifamily rather than the per-square-foot amount that applies to everyone else?
Yeah. Jim, I don't know if you were in those discussions. It was part of the tax study when they were trying to look at, you know, being able to come up with the right funding amounts to be able to deal with all the projects and programs that we wanted to do. I think it was just a way to be, to try and be fair for each one of those individual unit owners, so that, you know, I don't know specifically, Jim.
That's exactly right. And there was a parcel study that was commissioned to look at what's the best makeup of this, and the 10 cents per square foot for all of those different property types, but on the multifamily, it was, what the chief said is correct, that it was just an attempt to, with all the different types of unit sizes, to come up with something that would be fair for a multifamily unit.
And was there some perception that it'd be difficult to calculate the per-square-footage?
I think so. I think that from the county assessor's information and what was available, and the quality of the information that they had and that sort of thing, that this was the superior way of doing it.
Okay, so it's just a simplifying assumption made. Okay, thank you.
Enter.
Just technically, if the later jurisdictions are approving a document that has a 10-year sunset provision, which earlier jurisdictions didn't approve, how does that get, how does that go back and get corrected, if you will, before this goes to the voters?
I think there's jurisdictions that fall into two categories. One is that approved it contingent upon it being 10 years, so there's a group of those. And then there's a small group that had approved it without having that in there, and so they just approved it as is, as it was at the time, without having the 10 years in there. And the county council has said that they felt like they did not need to go back and take another action, because they're approving the JPA document, which doesn't actually call out the 10 years, it's the ordinance that's attached to it. So county council was recommending you don't have to do it. They were, they certainly could if they felt that that was the better thing to do with their council. And I'm not sure, maybe, if either chiefs know, like, for example, Larkspur was in that category. Do you know if they went back?
Yeah, Novato Fire Protection District was also, you know, we talked to our attorneys about that, whether or not we needed to go back and make revisions, and they really felt like they didn't have significant concerns with the revised wording and the inclusion of the sunset provision. Primarily, they thought it was a political issue, and that there was enough latitude in, you know, what we had adopted that night to allow the Board of Supervisors to set that rate at that time.
I have a couple of questions, but first, let the cat out of the bag, I'm fully supportive of us joining JPA. I've looked at it pretty carefully, and I think it is the right approach. We were prepared, we being San Rafael, prepared to do on our own if we had to, and with the guidance provided by the chief, I think it was back in August of 2017, wherein we asked, what can we do as a community? We only at that point controlled, you know, San Rafael, if you will. And was, the chief went off and came back a few months later with a plan, which was characterized as a framework, which touched on 37 points at that point in time, that would better position our community to, one, prevent such an event, which we all wish to do, or if it occurs, what do we do in that circumstance? So I've been very supportive of the chief and the department in this effort. Furthermore, we formed a committee of 15 in our community, and with the, I'll say, the direction of Quinn, more than that certainly, but certainly including the direction of Quinn, we've had a series of, I'm going to say six meetings, I could be off a little bit on that, but it's something like six, and so we have a pretty good sense of what at least this committee of 15 community members thinks, I don't think would be necessary and appropriate as a community. We're now in the process of going out to the community itself, and we have this plan and 37, 38 points, and we may further modify it based on input from our community. And so after we go through that process, we'll come back to city council and further modification perhaps, but nevertheless, the adoption of what we as a community want to make certain that we have accomplished, at least by plan, and ultimately enforced. And I've asked repeatedly, but I guess in this moment, I need to finalize that one more time, that in fact, those 37, I make 37, 38 is in coordination with the county, and I think that's self-evident. But before voting, I'd like to hear one more time that yes, in fact, the hard work that you put together, the community is going to see, and will come back to hear, to this body to ratify, if in fact, this program will cover those 37 points.
Yes, Mayor, it will, and not only that, it'll be complemented and enhanced.
And that's my, thank you, that's my sense as well, but at least it'll cover those, because you did, I thought, such a good job of being bold with regard to that document, and we didn't put monetary constraints upon it, which leads me to my second question. $10 a foot, 10 cents, a little decimal there. I'm thinking, $10, wow, how much is that going to cost me? No, no, 10 cents a foot. I'm curious, because a number of times I've seen, and hopefully it's not the case here, but a number of times I've seen particularly governmental bodies say, gee, how much is the community willing to pay? What's the threshold? What's the maximum amount? And they'll do surveys and do various things, come back and say, okay, here it is, and then try to fit the program within that funding. And I need to ask the question of whether or not that approach was taken here, obviously you want it to pass, but it results in 21 million, that's a big number. That's about two-thirds of what your department has as an annual budget, I believe. I think you're about 30, and we're about 20. So in that context, it's not a huge number, but in terms of whether or not that 21 is going to be adequate to do the things that need to be done throughout the county, including our 37 points, and so I would say those 37 points spread across the county, whether or not it's going to be adequate to do it? Question mark.
So what I would say is, we do think that it will be able to fund the projects and programs that we've outlined that we think will be effective. We think it moves the needle on the types of vegetation management and other programs. And it's also accumulative over time, so it may be $21 million for one year, but in 10 years, that's $210 million.
Correct.
And so on. And so we think that we want to be able to demonstrate to the public that we can be efficient with the funds that they're entrusting to us and move forward from there. The program could expand and contract as we move through, but we want to be able to demonstrate its effectiveness.
And I appreciate that, and I, in fact, thought in terms of the 10 years, and that's 200 million, 210, if you want to call it, when I'm involved in startup organizations, generally I know pretty explicitly the parties that are going to be performing whatever service it is, or whatever duties of the corporation. In this case, we have a void, which bothers me a little bit. I don't know who is going to be the, excuse me. I don't know who's going to be the president, or the general manager, and who's going to be the staff, and what the organization looks like. I'm still with you, but help me understand a little bit better what that organization is going to look like.
Well, I think it's up to the JPA to begin to form that. You know, I think you'll see, after the different agencies have decided to join, you'll see, you'll begin to see that structure take form, and, you know, there'll be additional opportunities to comment and provide input, and I don't, go ahead, Chief.
I'll just mention it. I don't mean this to be patronizing, but if I knew it was Jim, and the chief, and you, I'd say, let's go.
I see.
But I, there's a void out there, so I'm a little bit concerned about that.
Mayor, the points are well noted, and I think all of us have a stake in this, and it's critical that we be successful, and I don't think anyone is going to allow it to fail. And it's going to be critical who makes up this effort, and we'll be involved in that, with the selection of those member agencies. But it's important to recognize that we're all partners in this. So it's going to be up to us, and now with the ability to have additional funding to be successful here. So I think we're going to play an important role, and none of us, I know Chief Tyler, we are not going to allow this to fail. And if we run into any roadblocks, we're going to smooth them out and see that course corrections are made immediately.
And I have no doubt about that, but I'm also a little bit concerned when I see an organizational chart of 19, and that's a pretty large, you know, a pretty large group from which to manage. So will it be a typical structure? Are we going to see a chief of the JPA, whatever the term is, I apologize, I don't know, but are we going to have a, I'll say it, a general manager of the JPA, or?
Well, you're going to see, you know, some employees, and again, these aren't going to be full-time benefited employees in the traditional sense, and my vision is a hybrid, where there's shared services going on here. But I think what's most important, and particularly for San Rafael, is to recognize that by and large, we're going to be operating within the funds that we have available within our service area. Our service area that involves, you know, San Rafael, Marinwood, and the two CSAs. And with the funding that's available there, and working on projects, and projects that are going to be bordering us, so largely, we're going to have a high degree of influence over everything that's done on a day-to-day basis. So, and I think some of this is going to be flushed out as we go along further here with, I think who's left, Novalee tonight, Bellinas and Inverness, you know, are the two remaining agencies.
It seems, I'll be honest with you, it seems a little awkward to me. Having dealt with a number of business organizations, it seems a little awkward, and so I'm with you, but we're going to be following that pretty closely.
Absolutely.
Because the community, you were asking the community to pony up over this 10-year period, 200 million. And so we better be in a position, I think we will be, but we certainly better be, and it better be demonstrated that, in fact, we are performing as expected. You know, I wrote down goals and objectives, I'm not quite clear what those are, but presumably they'll be filled out as well. I have some other comments, but thank you. Oh, John, I'm sorry.
One that you brought up, and one that Beth brought up. So with the two organizations, the two jurisdictions that decided to opt out, as we know, they have significant land value and significant square footage with those properties there. The 21 million that was projected to be used for the program, how much of that 21 million was projected to be paid for by those two areas?
Only about 4%.
Only about 4%?
Yeah.
So the, and that was all based on the up to 10 cents piece?
On the entire tax.
Well, sure, the other parcels, and the pieces that go with that. So taking that 4% out, is it likely, in your opinion, that it would be anything, anything less than 10 cents, and with the inflation factor built into it, that we would see those, the 10 cents actually be, you know, 10.3 cents, 10.7 cents, 11 cents, by the end of the time, the first 10 years, that is there really any likelihood that it would be less than the 10 cents that's on there? Or is that just some ballot language that we're putting on there when we say up to 10%? Up to 10 cents?
So you're saying, over the 10-year period, do we think that it would come down?
Yeah.
You know, I think there's so much work to be done, you know, especially right in the beginning, to make sure that everything gets stood up properly and supported. I think it would not be likely to see it reduced in the first 10 years?
And you don't think, you don't, so in that 21 million, that included Belvedere and Tiburon, so it's truly, we're not going to get 21 million if those two parties don't participate? And so will we have enough, to the mayor's point? Or will we not? Because we, again, we haven't seen a program of what it's specifically going to be used for, and what those costs are going to be on this, and we're being asked to join into an organization that we don't know a lot about, and if there's a significant, albeit minor significant portion of the county that's not going to participate in this, is that going to be, are we going to, we're not going to have 21 million then, because that included those two things, so 4%? million then because that included those two things, so four percent, four percent less than that, twenty, twenty million, whatever it is, twenty-five million, is that enough?
Yeah, I don't see it as a significant deduction in the amount for the overall programs.
Plus presumably, we're not gonna service that area.
Right.
Right, that's correct.
Yeah, but that area, okay.
Bill, if we could, we're gonna ask for the public comments and thanks again, don't go away, cause you know, we may want to follow up. Anyone from the public? Thanks again.
Hello, my name is Kelly London, I'm president of the Locklomond Homeowners Association and I am here thrilled to support the JPA. I live on the, uh, my neighborhood is on the east side of San Rafael, which is a patchwork of multi-jurisdictions, MC, Marin County open space, city, state parks, orphaned state parks and so on. And to get nineteen people, let alone nineteen agencies to agree to do anything is spectacular and I just wanna say that the suasion of a large group like this is so much more than any one city could do, particularly the most unresponsive people, the state parks. So I am thrilled. I am here also, I'd like to publicly reassure my fellow senior citizens, I had a long conversation with Chief Weber this afternoon, and I'm thrilled to let our senior citizens know that low-income exemptions will be based on HUD San Francisco levels, beginning at eighty-two-thousand-two-hundred a year for a single person and ninety-three-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifty a year for a family of two, the highest in the country. So a lot of our senior citizens who have concerns may rest assured that there are exemptions for them, anyone with functional disabilities or handicaps will be helped. In addition, there will, pardon me, there will be a set aside of five-hundred-thousand dollars for grants to help disabled seniors comply with the new regulations. And I'm thrilled with the sunset clause because it allows the next generation to vote, to see the results, which I really believe will be spectacular, and to vote on it because we should allow the next generation to vote. So I was thrilled to see that, that took out a whole paragraph of my comments. The only other clarification I need to, in my outreach to my residents, is the square footage. The questions have come up, how is that not an ad valorem tax when insurance, property sales and so on are based on that? So that's a question that I'd like answered and please just let me quickly thank the people who weren't in the video. Chief Gray wasn't in the video, Quinn Gardner wasn't in the video, Robert Sennott wasn't in the video, Todd Lando of Fire Safe Marin wasn't in the video. Everyone else, you know we thank you, we know who you are and those people deserve a huge thanks as well.
Good point.
Hi, my name is Kingston Cole, I'm with the Lincoln-San Rafael Hill Neighborhood Association. I'm speaking in favor of the proposed wildfire prevention, JPA, with some observations and reservations, some of them have been rendered moot by this, by this discussion, excellent tonight, but let, I'm, let me offer them anyway. First, I'm grateful that the supporters have accepted a ten-year sunset provision that requires the JPA to come back and seek voter approval for continuation of the program. This is a long-term effort, but the public should have the final say on how effective the JPA is once a decade. I also believe that this ballot measure would have been more effective if it were accompanied by a list of general projects or specific goals. We have had four fires on San Rafael Hill, my neighborhood, in the last twenty years. Some specific assurances regarding vegetation management would make me and my neighbors feel much, much better. I also believe that the JPA should have an effective watchdog panel of citizens, not just professionals and political appointees, with some teeth that they are willing to sink into a bureaucracy that needs constant monitoring. I have worked as a consultant for more than forty government agencies, large and small over the last thirty years, including some JPAs, a couple of them here in this county. They were generally staffed by smart, competent and professional people, but they tend to develop insular cultures. We can't afford that with this wildfire prevention effort. A diverse, effective and powerful watchdog is absolutely needed. Given what happened in Mill Valley with its hard shell ordinance, I have to believe the JPA is going to have its hands full. Lastly, if I had my brothers, I believe Chief Gray's comprehensive thirty-seven or thirty-eight point wildfire plan would have worked just fine for, for, for San Rafael, with the right, with the right funding mechanism. That's not to be, but I thank you for your efforts and thank you for the goats up on the hill.
Thank you, everybody. Just one quick thing.
Sure.
In fact, we do have, and like I said, we've been working with fifteen, with six meetings thus far, going out to the community and certainly invite you, once the dates are set, to look at how we're going to address those thirty-seven. And in fact, that's going to be covered by this plan, cause I've been assured a hundred times, including one tonight.
Yeah, I'm on a cert steering committee with, with Quinn, so I, I'm trying to add my two cents where I can.
Good, excellent, thank you.
All right.
Tall people. My name is Pat Randolph and I live in the Forbes Sun Valley area of San Rafael. I'm also a member of Marin Citizens for Wildfire Preparedness, CWP for short. You've each received a couple of emails from my CWP colleague and fellow San Rafael resident, Mark Steisel and myself, alerting you to a couple of issues that we have seen with the JPA, a lack of a sunset clause and the need for a strong oversight committee. We're delighted that a ten-year sunset clause has been added. We know that the need will be perpetual, but taxpayers deserve the chance to weigh in periodically. We're also grateful that a citizens oversight committee was included in the JPA. We've been assured by county council that the deficiencies we see with the strength of the COC can be overcome by appropriate bylaws when the JPA is up and running. We will trust that that is so. We believe that a sunset clause and a strong COC will make the JPA and tax easier to sell to a tax-weary public. Marin Citizens for Wildfire Preparedness are thrilled to wholeheartedly support the formation of Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority and the needed tax to support it. We urge your positive vote to join and to ask the supervisors to place the tax on the March ballot. And finally, I'd like to thank Chief Gray, Quinn Gardner, the San Rafael Citizens Wildfire Advisory Committee, which I've attended a couple of times, and each of you for all you've done to make wildfire preparedness important in San Rafael. And also thanks to Chief Tyler, Chief Weber, who I think is in Mill Valley tonight, Battalion Chief Neil, Jim Schultz and others who have worked so hard to move this process along countywide. I'm a grateful citizen and I'm ready to work to get this passed.
Great, thanks for your comments, very good, thank you.
My name is Belle Cole and I'm speaking on behalf of the Marin Wildfire and Climate Coalition. It's an ad hoc collaboration among environmental and climate activists in Marin and it is a pleasure to be here in support of the wildfire W, JPA initiative that acknowledges intensifying climate change and extensive fire buildup as contributors to the increasing threat of wildfire throughout Marin County. And the, the document also says as well that these threats should be addressed through ecologically sound practices that minimize release of greenhouse gases and protect the biodiversity and resilience of Marin's landscapes. The initiative is compatible with climate goals. In fact, it funds important actions to reduce climate change through sound wildfire prevention measures. If a major wildfire comes to Marin, it will not only threaten lives and homes, but likely release many thousands of tons of greenhouse gases into the atmosphere, setting back our efforts to curb the growing climate crisis. The initiative will spend twenty-one million dollars a year for ten years to help reduce wildfire threats, taking on the costly burden of controlling a devastating climate change impact. By properly managing vegetation, the initiative will result in healthier landscapes. When environmental appointments to the advisory technical committee and the citizens oversight committee, with that happening, there are, the initiative provides opportunities for climate and environmental perspectives to be an integral part of decision-making because the, the statute now says that environmentalists will be on these committees. And moving forward, we expect that the wildfire authority will continue to draw on the expertise of the climate and environmental communities, compiling a guide for best practices, refining a list of fire-resistant plants, coordinating efforts with drawdown Marin for, for reduction of greenhouse gases and contributing to public education. I think I'll just end with saying that, that this is, there's work ahead to bring the details into focus and we need to all stay engaged and be part of that process, but now is the time to bring this initiative to the voters and let the community decide if a countywide response to wildfires is appropriate, we believe that it is. Thank you.
And thanks for your comments, well, well-stated. Who's next?
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, council, staff, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Stan Burford, I am a resident of San Rafael, twenty-six years, fifty years in Marin County, and I am also a member of the San Rafael Fire Commission. On October ninth, the Fire Commission took official action to unanimously support the City of San Rafael by recommending the city join the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority. The MWPA would be a countywide authority and as such requires a vote of the people and that's set for March. For anyone who has any questions that have not been answered so far or does not understand the magnitude of borderless fire and the need for twenty-first century coordinated program, I would recommend they go online to MarinWildfire.org, www.marinwildfire.org, and you should find all of your answers there. Again, the Fire Commission says yes to the MWPA and we stand ready to help you in any way we can.
Excellent, thanks, thanks for your service. Nice to hear from that esteemed group, we have a couple here in addition that are on the commission. Good evening.
Good evening, Council, Larry Minikas. Lot of good questions from you and Mayor Phillips, I hope you'll advise this group as they join. You know, I recognized when this was first beginning, there are a lot of moving parts and we weren't gonna be anywhere near, we as a community, near ready to answer a lot of the questions as to how this is gonna work and a lot of what you were saying is what I've been thinking as well, they have a lot, a lot to do here, so it's, it's, it's a heavy lift, it's definitely a heavy lift. And what I'd like to do at this moment is speak on behalf of the Marin Conservation League and I'm not gonna read our entire letter, it's a long evening, I think this is kind of a slam dunk for San Rafael, but I'll just read a, a few sentences. The Marin Conservation League joins with others to support the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority that will create the Joint Powers Authority funded by a parcel tax. MCL is working to ensure that ecological values of vegetation, such as soil and water management and habitat, will be integrated into defensible space vegetation treatments and JPA programs. MCL will continue to monitor the initiative and provide a more detailed analysis as we near the March 2020 election. With that, what's nice to see is we're not hearing too much opposition tonight, are we?
Not so far anyway, no.
Yeah, thank you very much, all.
Thank you so much for your comments.
And, and thank you all for your incredible work and.
And yeah, and thanks for MCL, thank you. Next person, please. Bill, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members, I'm Bill Carney with Sustainable San Rafael. You know, we, we appreciate and support all the work that's gone into this, really great staff work and also the results, we absolutely support. And we especially appreciate that, we appreciate the framing of this initiative as a response to climate change impacts and we also embrace, or we applaud the, the JPA's embrace of environmentally responsible ways to make both our buildings and our landscapes more fire resistant. The agreement rightly recognizes that these intensifying impacts of climate change should be addressed through ecologically sound practices, as you've heard. Such practices can help our landscape to quote, "draw down" the greenhouse gases from, out of the atmosphere and store that carbon in healthy soils and healthy plants. Marin's vegetation currently absorbs over a third, over a quarter of the greenhouse gases that the county as a whole emits every year. So it's a very significant part of our overall goal, of reaching our overall goal of reducing greenhouse gas emissions and ultimately, measures like this are key to getting to the drawdown Marin goal, which is net zero carbon pollution. So we need this and many other actions to get there. As we reduce fuel loads in ways that increase the health of vegetation and also protect that vegetation from going up in smoke during uncontrolled wildfires, we're actually enlisting nature in what increasingly must be an all-out mobilization to reverse global warming. So thank you for your leadership in this.
And thank you, Bill. Good points. Anyone else? Seeing no one, we'll close, public, and return for follow-up comments and a motion if we're at that point. Any other comments?
Sure.
John, sure.
Sure. I, I don't think anybody here in, in the audience disagrees that we obviously have a very urgent issue in front of us, as, as witnessed by the reports that we've seen, the fires that we've experienced, just the fires two, two weeks ago down in Southern California, that were fueled by high winds and potentially, you know, the source, you know, it's, it's there, it's part of life and, and we're dealing with it and this is a way to deal with it. My concern about this creation of, of the JPA is one that I, I think has been expressed to some extent of, we're asked, being asked to join something that we're not fully aware of what it's gonna look like, how it's gonna be staffed, what, what the funds are gonna be used for. I recall a couple of years ago when, when the Transportation Authority of Marin came back and wanted us to support an increase on measure, I think it was measure A or double A, to increase the sales tax from what it was currently was to fund transportation initiatives. And they wanted our support, but yet they didn't have a plan of what they were gonna use the money for. And so all of us combined sat up here and said, you know, that's not good enough, before we go ahead and support this, we're gonna, we're, we wanna see what you're gonna do with it. And they went back and they put together a plan and came back and line by line told us what the money was gonna be used for and they actually said that we're not gonna ask for an increase as well, we're gonna keep it under the, the current sales tax that we have in place. What we're being asked tonight is to say, here, go put this to the voters, which I completely agree with and let them decide what they wanna do, but we're asking them to approve a ten-year parcel tax to create up to twenty-one million dollars and obviously it could be more with, with the inflation index applied to it. And we really don't have an idea of, of what the plan for those, that spending is gonna be. Well, we have, we have a framework that we put forth in our, in our points, that we put forth in, in, in the plan that, that Santa Phil put together and that the JPA has looked at, but really no cost analysis on, on where that's gonna go. And is, you know, if we get twenty-one million dollars in the first year, where's that gonna go? You know, we have the breakdown, it's gonna go sixty, twenty, twenty, but what does that look like? And, you know, this, the grand jury came out with a report less than six months ago and the fact that the Marin Managers Association and the Chiefs Association worked tirelessly to put this together, the fact that we as a city council really didn't have a whole lot of input tonight is, and on, on what this is gonna look like going forward, I, and it needs to be put on the ballot in March, I, I think that there is, I think that there is, there should be more time to do this. We can all say, we don't have enough time. We, you know, We, you know, time is of the essence. We say that in a lot of things, but I also think that we owe it to our folks to truly understand what we're going to be doing with their funds. And I don't think we've had enough time to do that from the time that it was requested by the grand jury to create a JPA and to where we are right now. That if, even if this was put on the June ballot, you know, an additional three months, I think that would give us, you know, more time to truly understand where, where the funding is going, what it's going to look like, what the organizational structure is going to look like. And as people have mentioned, 19 members to get to agree to anything is one thing. Well, we had 19, you know, city managers agree, agree to something, but we don't know who those 19 people are going to be, that are going to be appointed from the jurisdictions to sit on that board. We don't know who those folks are going to be. We don't know who the oversight committee is going to be. We don't know who the technicals committee is going to be. We don't have any names, you know, and it, it could change, it could change dramatically on getting those folks in line. Now, that could still be the same six months from now. But I think if we had just that extra little time, it would, it would make me feel more comfortable that this wasn't a, the need to, to do this today so that the board can do this next month, so this can be input. I mean, the voters are going to have their say and they're going to get, they're going to get to be able to do this. For me, I, I can't support this as of today to, to, for San Rafael to enter into this with, there's just a lot of outstanding questions that I, I think haven't been answered yet.
Mr. Mayor, could I just have a moment to answer one outstanding question that came from Ms. London regarding ad valorem tax?
Uh, sure. And then I want to circle back to Jim because Jim may have, I want to put you on the spot, but Jim may have a response. I'd like to address some of John's concerns as well, but go ahead with the ad valorem.
Sure. I just wanted to respond to the question. An ad valorem tax is a tax that's based on value of an item like a sales tax or a property tax. Ms. London's correct that oftentimes when realtors talk about how real properties priced in Marin County, they'll talk about a square footage value, but that's not how price is necessarily negotiated or assigned. And property tax is based on an assessed value of property. Here, the tax that's being proposed would be based on square footage, so it's not an ad valorem tax.
Right. And, and thanks for that clarification. You might want to comment, I think, just not to debate, but maybe clarification on some of the points, or maybe it's an opinion on some of the points.
Sure. I'd be happy to give my thoughts on a number of those points, although I've had an opportunity to speak with Councilmember Gamblin at length and I greatly respect where he's coming from on this. So, I don't think I'm going to be able to change any of mine at this point.
I'm not asking for a debate or trying to sell me on, sell me on this.
I know that the, I wouldn't mind talking about a couple of things. I know that the major, the major issue in the past that we've talked about has been the 10-year sunset. So that's now in place and confirmed. The, the idea of we don't know, I mean, this is a brand new JPA, so there are some things that we don't know and that we're going to be working on in the coming months. Who the JPA board's going to be, it's going to be a member of each of the governing bodies, so it'll be one of you representing San Rafael. And the same for all the other boards, member agencies as well, it'll be one person from their elected officials. The, the operations committee will be made up of city managers and fire chiefs. I think that there is a real commitment from the city managers, having spent the amount of time that we did on this, that they feel like they want to be directly involved on, on that committee. What the funds are going to be used for, and I want to add, ask Chief Gray to respond to this as well, is yes, there's the breakdown of the 60/20/20, but then there's also all the work that's been done in the, in the planning documents in the past with the, with the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, the Lessons Learned Document, our 38 points. When we've gone out for grants in the past, we've, we've had to say specifically, this site, this site, this site, this site, you know, for fuel reduction. So we know all of that here and we know that all of the other jurisdictions have lists like that in their locality as well. So it'll just be a matter of having the operations committee working with the technical committee to make a recommendation with all those points to the, to the JPA board. So that's how it's going to be done. Chief, is there anything you'd like to add to that?
No, a couple of things. We do have a multimillion dollar vegetation management plan that we need to enact. We applied for a CAL FIRE grant and did not receive it. Actually, another area in Marin County in Ross Valley did receive it. We're competing for the same grant dollars. We've been unsuccessful. They were, this is a collaborative effort involving all of the counties. We'll actually be able to drive funding here that's local and put it into place. Currently, we don't have that capability. We're woefully inadequate when it comes to doing inspection activity. We have two part-time inspectors funded by Measure A Quarter Cent Sales Tax, of which we share with three other departments. We have not begun to approach a learning and warning in the way we need to, evacuation planning. We've got some ready-made efforts that we can put into place immediately. All we need is the funding. There's a force multiplier effect and I think in an economy, a scale that will come into play with use of the advantages that this authority will have versus us trying to go this alone with either separate contracts. GOATs are a good example. Doing this on the basis of the authority doing it together or us going alone, we're going to be paying for more and doing less. And we have no guarantee that our neighbor's going to do anything. Going this route, we have a high guarantee that everything within our immediate area is going to be taken care of and controlled. All of these projects, we'll be looking at them together. So rather than have to go try to twist the county's arm, they'll be doing it together with us on adjoining properties that we both, in my case, as the fire chief for the entire greater area, I have to, you know, on prevention activities, I got to go beg and borrow to try to pull all this together. I will no longer have to do that. So it's a significant advantage with the authority here. We'll just be able to do all of that planning together, all of our educational work, all of our outreach. It's going to be significant and we'll have much deeper pockets to work through. And the, the good thing about it is over 80% of that money is coming right back here and we'll be able to direct it exactly where it needs to go. And we've got that first year already planned. So we're, we're excited about the potential and anxious to proceed.
Thanks for the comments. Kate?
I'm sure you have the first couple of years already planned because I've read that 37-point plan. It's more, it's more than one year. I was a San Rafael representative on Marin Ready Together and I want to give a shout out to Supervisor Katie Rice. She's the one that brought all of the elected officials together in the very early on of this process. The fire professionals were there as well as the representatives from each of the 19 agencies. So that is where the cross jurisdictional work started and that's where there were concerns from different cities brought up at that point. And we had great conversations that then the professionals and staff were able to go back and to start really with those broad statements, starting to get into the details. So it was an excellent example of us all working together and showing up. And it's wonderful to be at this step today, to be one of the last ones to come through. I do wholeheartedly support this. I'm really pleased that as part of the work, the second whereas was included and that was, that has to do with climate resiliency and climate change. And that was really important because I know that when we were all talking about it, you know, we were all focused on, you know, the fire prevention part. And I appreciate the environmentalists that came out and said, you know what, we need to have this part of the message. So I'm incredibly happy about that. And then to just have a counterpoint to some of Councilmember Gamblin's concerns, I guess for me, I just, I trust the process. I trust the people that were in the room at Marin Ready Together. I trust the fire professionals. I trust the community members that have come out here today on a Monday night who've read the document to say, you know what, we, we know this is the right thing for our community. Yes, we don't have every I dotted and T crossed, but we know this is the right direction. We trust that we're all going to get there together and we're going to continue to collaborate. So again, thrilled that we got here, all these herding of cats. And I look forward to supporting a motion when it's made after my colleagues have spoken.
And thanks for your comments, Mayor.
Just, just a couple of comments. I want to follow up on the JPA comments and offer for our consideration. My experience, not on the wildfire subcommittee, but on the Central Marin Sanitation Agency, which is a joint powers authority between a, a number of sewer collection agencies in San, in Marin County. It works incredibly well. It was not entirely thought out when it was down to the, the details when it was started, but respected professionals with a, an interest in the community came together and built a system that works. We have an elaborate sort of feedback mechanism where the representatives to the, the JPA body come from an underlying body and have to go back to their constituents and make sure that all of their votes are consistent. So in that way, Marin has a history of using JPAs as an effective and efficient way to execute uncommon goals. So I'm not troubled by the, the, the lack of specificity and, and every detail being figured out. I have confidence in the respective professionals that will be involved in it and as well as our, our ability to add and change things as, as, as the, the future unfolds. So I'm, I'm okay with that. I also want to though, express my disappointment in our non-participating entities. These, uh, decision makers unfortunately have decided to not allow their voters the opportunity to have their say in whether they want to participate in this. And I hope that there will be a time where they will reconsider their votes and decide to participate in the JPA. I'm also, I'm very confident in that this, the JPA's work will integrate seamlessly with our own activities here in San Rafael, led by the indomitable Quinn. And that we will, that together, these two programs will leave San Rafael in a much better place and much better prepared to resist wildfires as they come along. Thanks.
Thanks. Andrew?
I'd like to go last if I could.
Very last?
Yeah. Please.
There's nothing to be said when you finish last. You know, I, I struggle.
True, true. First, I, I do support the, the JPS being presented to us this evening. I was a little troubled. It's not perfect. Wouldn't expect it to be at this early stage. There are some concerns that I might share with, with John, but overriding for me is the fact that certainly this community has an expectation for us to do something, something significant. And I think we'll be better prepared by moving forward with this to address the community's concerns. I'm also confident, as several others, that in fact, with the number of capable people that we have addressing the issues of organization, et cetera, goals, objectives, that in fact, those, those perhaps voids at this point in time will be satisfied. And I'm confident that we'll all be better protected as a result of that. Nerbeth made reference and it caught my attention to, to a JPA that she's involved in, I'm somewhat involved in SMART. Now, you know that SMART involves both counties and six, 12 of us on the, on the SMART board. It struggles at some time, but it is a broad community effort to provide a single service as this might be as well. And I think it's worked reasonably well. Could be better, but you know, reasonably well with what we have seen thus far. So I'm, I'm confident that that, this too will mirror that experience as well as, as the other CMA. Furthermore, I think, John, if you think about it, and I know you have, and I don't mean it derogatory, but we do have a backdrop. And the thing, reason I'm comfortable is that we, we know as a community what we want to do, thanks to the chief, thanks to Quinn, and more recently, the involvement of the community, by the way, of the 15 and then further community involvement. We as a community have a pretty good idea as to what we need to accomplish and want to accomplish. I suspect we're a little bit ahead of some of the other communities. They may not have that same vision. And so I think that we, we're in a place where we can measure how we're doing and, and adjust as we go along. As any organization, new organization particularly, that's going to happen and I think we're in a place where we can, can do that. So I'm comfortable that we'll fill whatever gaps might appear, but more importantly, the 38 points that we think are important to provide the protection for our community. So I too will, as others have said, look forward to our community expressing their view on this matter. I for one, I may be strongly in favor of it. So thanks once again for the presentation. Those are not the last words, by the way.
It'll be in tomorrow's edition of the IJ, so I feel at liberty to say it tonight, but one of our number up here had a significant health scare last week. We are all very, very grateful that it was just a health scare and that individual, Mayor Gary Phillips, has rebounded with tremendous vigor and energy and is back at the helm of our community. Why do I mention that? Because this issue before us is an issue that he's been championing for the last two years. That is for San Rafael to get out in front and assert a leadership role in fire prevention for our community. His efforts and the efforts of others who have already been acknowledged here this evening, I think have brought us to the point where we have a much larger community, the community of Marin, where we are collectively ready to move forward on fire prevention in a very proactive way. Yes, we're going to tax ourselves, but to some of John's points, I think that particularly of late, some of the changes made, the oversight committee, the sunset provision, and earlier on, the governance model that was hammered out between professional staff, provides the backstop that we need to ensure that this is done well, it's done right, and that in 10 years, if it's not, there's going to be accountability. So with that said, and with a lot of gratitude to those who have worked so hard for this, including our mayor, and with the hope and expectation that for the next year of his term, he continues to provide the tireless energy and leadership that he has to date on this issue and on others, I'd like to make a motion if I could.
Please do. And thank you for comments.
That motion is that we adopt the resolution and we authorize our mayor on behalf of the city of San Rafael to execute a joint exercise of powers agreement.
Second.
Move to the second row call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Collins.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McCullough.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
Aye, in that matter, carries for, for one. And thank you, thank you, gentlemen. Job well done. And we as a community certainly are appreciative. So thank you very much. And thanks for everybody with your comments. I bet they were excellent comments. Thank you. With that, let's see where we're at here. I'll ask for council members' reports and requests for future agenda items. Is anybody, anybody? Nobody, nobody? San Rafael Successor Agency Quarterly Investment Report. Jim, is that you or I guess that's you?
It's a consent calendar item or we could do, we have a 50-point PowerPoint slides.
I'll, I'll move the consent calendar.
Let me think about that one. Move to the second end. Row call, please.
Member Bushy.
Aye.
Member Collins.
Aye.
Member Gamblin.
Aye.
Member McCullough.
Aye.
Chairman Phillips.
Aye, in that matter, carries 5-0 and we are adjourned.